Mornings, get started.
So today I'll talk on like uh as replacing uh raw bonded query with the parameter. So what I discussed yesterday, so it will help actually to improve the security and square injection.
Okay, is it, is it in QA then?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Okay. Is there a, is there a way to test it?
Yes, this like can test it like like it should not back any functionality. I will test it after I think it's deployment, then so I will test it.
Okay, sounds good.
And also Jerry, it's I found it while I was doing that. There's some uh uh like a hard coded SQL query there. So can we convert the to U D F? Rock query is there.
Uh, send me, send me what you need.
Yeah, there's a couple of like more than ten square uh and raw SQL query. I will send it to you. You will convert into U D F, then I will place it.
Okay. Thank you, Amit. Um Jerry, let's get you up.
Yeah, uh sorry, I'm getting something set up, but uh this morning I helped Ismail get a um. Uh I don't think there's really a good way for me to demo this, but you just have to trust me on it. But I got a query, I basically copied a query for Ismail to use for the, for the chat search. I know you wanna like have it like search groups, maybe by message body or something. I said that was gonna take a little while, but uh that a way we could just leave it as a backend update. I I'm giving Ismail a separate query that he can play with in the meantime. Um but then once I'm ready to make the changes where we try to search by message content, I'll be doing that. Um.
The, the search group is already ready, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's all, it's all ready. I just copied the query. That a way if we wanna like start enhancing it a bit and leave the old version alone that's used for the plus chat.
Okay.
Yeah, it just, it just, it makes it a little safer for us to keep the whole functionality. And yesterday I went ahead and um. I made some really good progress on the WhatsApp external chat integration. So when I'm going to need to test it further, I'm gonna look for this is I'm gonna need like basically the equivalent of like. A, a Google Voice or a text now number for uh like an international number. I've been, I've basically hardcoded one of my Google Voice numbers to register as an international number. That a way it uses WhatsApp, but I have successfully achieved in the test environment. Two-way communication between circles and WhatsApp.
Okay, great.
I'll be putting the finishing touches on that today. It's mostly gonna be me trying to create some test cases to validate it and make sure it works.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, gonna be, it's gonna be tricky because I'm gonna need a WhatsApp number. For an international number, I mean international WhatsApp number and pray it doesn't get blocked.
Okay.
So those are the challenges that I have for it, but I've been, I'm, I'm able to test at least with my personal number and.
Okay, you maybe could test with Amit? I mean, he's got a WhatsApp number.
Okay, yeah, uh uh it's not immediately ready because what happened is the key expired. Because when you, when you use the test key, it's only valid for like an hour or so. So like generate another test key and when I'm ready, I can reach out to him.
Okay, okay, great.
Hopefully it's before he uh signed off, but um. Ooh, I'll have to, oh, that's another thing is we need a. Okay, well, Amit has multiple phones. He, he has multiple phones, so I don't have to like delete his circles account. He has like a burner phone, right? Okay, cool, cool, okay. That's the only thing I was thinking about. Okay, um. Yeah, I'm gonna have to configure that and let's see, I'm going to be working on creating an email. Template for Ian, uh so that there's some new rewards being added to the store, so I'm gonna uh. Gonna make a matching template for that. And um need to, and if I have time, following all that, I will try and finish up. I will try to finish up or make progress on that dashboard for sending S M Ss.
Okay, very good.
Yep.
Anything else?
Uh, no, I think that's, that's all I got for now.
All right. Great, thank you, Jerry. All right, um, I mean, let's get you up to.
Yeah, um, so yeah, yesterday was um. I'll keep working on the issues we have with the new architecture. Last time we were talking, we had that issue is um. We fixed the first issue, which was like if you navigate him from a compose to a chat. Transition was bad, we fixed it, and now it's like a fading. But it was like the other issue where we stop that, understand that it's like if you go back, everything is squabbed. Quopped or like scroll down. I fixed that too, um, I found a fix for it. Uh, yeah, and that's it that um. Keep working on Shantel's issues. I fixed three of them. Let me go three, four. Of which ones? One, it was um, well, one thing that I um noticed they were all like. I didn't know like it was, they were like, for now, like I worked on three issues. The main common thing is like navigation because of the, we did upgrade navigation. Uh library to the latest, so that's why things are weird. So one of the issue was like in the chat. If you're like coming from a compose. Let me share screen, um. Um, so yeah, the issue here is uh Shantel was explaining is uh it's in the video like. She, she, she's all like uh multiple issues, but all of them are down. To one issue, which is like she was trying to share this profile. Uh, everything is good so far. Um, but once. Here, once she's gonna do a sun. When the sun finishes, it's um, she should be taken to the chat, but she, she was not. She was still the new message. And from here, things were weird. She didn't see the sun message, uh the sun button. She didn't like. It was like, why did you feel this in here? So yeah, all of these issues like from here. Like from here to, to the last, which um they were all because the navigation did not happen. It should happen. But yeah, I fixed it.
This is the QA, this is the new architecture, right?
Yeah, this is new. All of this I'm talking about, I'm fixing is new.
Okay, like how come the sun button looks like that too?
Yeah, I saw that. It's like um. It's a slight issue. I'm not sure if Shantel is, she's having that sun button looks like this in other builds. Or only this build?
There was a few, there's a few little things like, let's see, um, if you look at the year two thousand six next to the movie cover. It's like not really fitting inside there.
Well, yeah, um, well, now we're, we're focusing on like.
Yeah.
The year on aspects of the issues.
Right, right. I was noticing though, there's a lot of little style issues, um. But the functionality is most important right now.
Yeah, I also like the bills don't look good as we have on our eyes too. So, yeah, like I, I'm not sold on that when I was like, wow, looking through the video. But first like thing that I was focusing on like to fix this and now it's, it's fixed like.
Okay.
Are we deploying something to you, to QA, Jerry?
Uh, yeah, I think so right now. If it doesn't, didn't finish already.
Okay, so yeah, once that's is done, so yeah, I, I fixed this issue and now. When the sand happens, i- it should be navigated to uh. In the new chat as it was before, and it was this, this issue was only Android. And the other issue is this. Um, is this like, if you toggle this lobby and you navigate, it's, it stays. You know, it doesn't dismiss as we have before.
Saw on her screen record, the keyboard was covering half of this loty. I don't know if it was because you were. Fast forwarding and maybe just like it was only for like a frame or if it was. Longer with the keyboard.
Yeah, in this one or the other one?
Yeah, it was the first screen record you were showing. Right here. I don't know how long that keyboard is sitting there, but obviously that's not right.
Yeah, let me see. Well, I know why, um. The keyboard was there because like this, you can see through the input. Still focused, you know? And that's why, uh, yeah, I can, I can fix that. We dismissed the keyboard before on toggling this lot.
Yeah, which I don't, you know, it's not a problem. The old architectures, I wonder what is different with the new architecture making it do that. So like, I'm assuming you're, you're already handled. This is the keyboard.
Um, it should be like, do we have this issue? Like, um, I didn't confirm if, if the way I have it on the old.
We definitely do not on iPhones, um.
Yeah, um, I was like Android, um.
Todd might be able to tell us.
What's that?
Show them how to recreate it, I mean.
Mm-hmm.
If you go. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, if you just go do like you're gonna do a new chat, then we'll share. That's it. Is the keyboard gonna be?
Oh. Let me check. This is in ninety-nine?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, one sec.
No, well, uh, it should be not ninety-nine, ninety-nine is the new architecture. It's gonna happen, I guess. We wanna confirm if this happen on old builds. But yeah, Android, you can uh test out all the builds. Or at least like the one on, on, on the apps like the Play Store.
I thought you wanted them to test it on the QA build.
Um, what do you mean QA build?
The new architecture.
Okay, this is, this is a QA build, new architecture.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's like I, I can reproduce in my hand too, it's like.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm, what I was, what I was like meaning is, do we have the same issue on the old architecture?
Okay.
So we know, is this like a new architecture issue or not, you know?
Right, right. Okay, so Todd, do you have um a build from the Google Play Store?
Yeah, of course, from my, my phone.
Yeah, try hitting that plus chat button and then hitting the share button.
All right, let's see.
On iPhone, the keyboard dismisses.
Okay. Let's got. Here, keyboard dismisses.
Okay, so it's a new architecture thing, I mean.
Okay, all right, um, yeah, uh, I'll look into it, fix it too. Um, yeah.
Right, cuz it's definitely something we handled once before.
So, like, um, now within the new architecture, things are different. I'll, I'll tell you why, because like this issue. Um, that we have right now, uh, in this, like in this new architecture, where this, it's not being dismissed. After you navigate. I'm not sure if you remember, we had this issue before and even like, even when it's dismissed, you can like before this lot is being dismissed. You see a little bit of the home screen, then it's dismissed, then you see. The, 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 the desired screen. And we had this issue before and we fixed it and we did some fixes to go around this issue. Now, the fixes that we did there are what's causing this issue. With the new architecture, what I did is just revert this.
Oh, I like reverting, yeah, I like taking away versus.
Yeah, and yeah, and it just works, um, as it was supposed before, um, normally, so. Like.
Maybe something similar.
Yeah, yeah, what, yeah, what I want to say is like. Things that use, we, we had an issue with before and we fixed them and now we have. We seen them again within your shit, because of the fixes we applied. They should not be there anymore because it fixed in the like uh top of React Native, so you don't have to worry about it.
So that's a gain in stability and performance too, right? Cuz it's already built in, right?
Mm-hmm, yep.
That's great, okay. Okay, good. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna say like I fixed this one too, now it's like. And there's no uh flickers or anything. Once you press, for example, entertainment here. Everything dismissed and you see, and you see this, this screen with no lot here, um. Uh, I just want to show this all of that, but the app is down now. Um.
Cuz of the deployment?
Yeah. Okay, it's still deployed and, um, yeah, I fixed this issue too. Um, there was this other issue here. Uh, Shantel says, if I go to chicken and add three photos, I cannot tag anyone. It, yeah, I can reproduce it, but it has nothing to do with adding photos or not, like just pressing here tag friends, it doesn't work. Uh, yeah, and because of the React navigation changes, um, the new um version. The um, they had some changes that breaks the navigation here and yeah, I went and I like. Not like I fixed it, I know what was causing it, I just, I just need to understand what's the. Like key element that broke it, but like I fixed it is um, and the issue why is because like. We had a custom transition, if you navigate from tag friend, if you navigate from here to tag friends, it was a custom. Transition we have in the code and that custom transition, it's breaking the navigation. If I just remove it and I, we had the regular transition, this works fine. So, but yeah, I'll, 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 I'll know exactly cuz, cuz I would need to know like which one that broke. Um, navigation here cuz like we use that in other places during the app, so I have to uh fix it across the board.
So by fixing it, are you gonna fix the transition or are you just gonna remove the transition?
No, no, I'll fix the transition. Right now, like I, I fixed it by removing transition, it's, it works. But I'll, I'll look more into the transition and see what's breaking it, what's making it to work cuz we need a, another, it's in the app. Um, what else? Yeah, um, there's the three things that I'm working on and you can see there's others uh keep working on. Um, yeah, that's it so far. Let me see, so.
Do you have more bug fixes defects from Todd or Shantel that you can look?
Yeah, 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 there is, there is still, there's like from Todd, there's those other two, one, two. Three, so yeah.
Okay, good, good. Making good progress, very nice.
Yeah.
Okay, anything back from Sentry?
Now, um, no, they did not, like it was a co- a comment, it was like, what it says. Um, no, it's not in here, it's not. Yeah, that's what yesterday was like, thank you, I received the invitation. This way I, I reopen the issue and move it to our blog logs, we can eventually investigate it. And yeah.
Eventually investigate, I don't sound that.
It's not, it's not only us that we had this issue, like I went here.
Know I know that, just reading what that guy wrote, he is saying two things that stand out. He said, I'll add it to the backlog.
Mm-hmm.
Actually, get to it. He's basically saying, don't, don't hold your breath on this. It's not gonna, we're not even looking at it.
Yeah, um.
That's not cool. Um, I wanna, I wanna see if I can light a fire under them. Is Danny here? This is with, I mean, we don't have a relationship with Sentry. We have a relationship with Amplitude. Um. Actually, we did meet, remember when we were in Portland, wasn't sent, wasn't Sentry there? Did we talk to them?
I think, yeah, we did. Essentially, we were there, we, we talked with one of.
Yeah, Danny might have got a contact. I'll ask him. I wanna see if I can elevate, escalate. Because the sound of that was like, they're not even looking at it.
Mm-hmm.
But okay, so you were saying this is a common problem?
Yeah, I find like other um issues um related to, to this, like um, performance issues. I, I can't find them right now, but I'm sure I've, I've found a couple of issues here.
From other people in our.
Yeah, yeah. Um. Here, oh. Yeah.
I'm wondering. Is there any React Native app? On an iPhone, on iPhone that has a smooth scroll? Like with Sentry installed, with session replay installed?
Um, I don't know anybody, like I know like the, the ally. Like uh these kind of platforms that they provide system like this amplitude, but it's not ready, but there's the other one called. That's a hope. Is this one, um?
No, I meant, just with, speaking of just Sentry.
Oh, no, 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 there's not, there's not Sentry like. Because this is the code and they run it on their software, that's why they get paid too. No one's gonna do that for them.
Well, but what I'm, what I'm wondering, we don't, we won't have an easy way to answer this question, but I'm wondering. If every. Other app developer out there, it like us using Sentry. And has Flashlist. Has a problem with the scroll. I wonder if, is there, again, in other words, is there any circumstance? Where you can install session replay of Sentry, not anybody else's product, just Sentry's session replay on an iPhone. And have Flashlist be smooth, like we stripped it down to a playground of almost nothing. But Flashlist and session replay, right? And so, could you realistically infer? That everybody trying to use Sentry's session replay in conjunction with Flashlist. Has a jittery scroll? Wouldn't that, is that a fair?
I would say, I would say yes. I remember like, um, two months ago, three months ago, something like that. Like I uh came across this tweet like about someone, he's in the community saying. Like things he used like for his React Native apps, one of the points it was like, don't use session replay for Sentry. It's, it's um, it's just a re, and yeah, and. There is that, that I, I don't have that to you, but I can find it and there's this other guy that it's, you can see it's September two. Unexpected scroll glitches when using this mobile, mobile replay integration is the session replay. So is, is having scroll glitches, it's like. See, he's like, it was deep with what he found and everything, what he did and.
Is he using Flash?
Um, let me see what he's using. Is, 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 uh, let me see. It does not, it, he does not say if he's using flashes or not, but like it was like scrolling in general. So it could be just the need, like the React native scroll view or flat, flat list.
Right.
And so it's not about what.
This is a widespread problem.
Mm-hmm.
First, like the way he phrased that. Really uh does not line up with the urgency for his, their entire customer base trying to benefit from this. Like I'm really surprised, it was, he was dismissive of it, like I'm surprised to see that, like other things are taking priority. Which I would understand if this was a, a rare occurrence. But it seems like it's gonna be a widespread occurrence if it's every iPhone with a scroll view. I'm surprised, I wanna go over his head, like you know what I mean, like he has a boss.
Yeah, exactly, that's what I was gonna say, like he just, he got like listed as to, to work on and he, and for now.
Is he an engineer? What, who is he?
He is an engineer. I'm not sure if you remember, like on the other meeting, that, this is the engineer that we were, um. The other girl, she was like saying that we can uh um go on a call with, he's in Switzerland or Austria, something like that.
Okay, is he, um, how's he messaging you? Like what platform? How's he messaging you?
Um, yeah, from here, um.
Is this like a, like a forum on their site?
This is, this is like GitHub. He has this issue section, yeah, you can think of a form. We have his email too.
We have his email.
Yeah, it was like, um.
Okay, and he's, but you're messaging him through GitHub?
Yeah, messaging through GitHub and also like, um, I did send him an email here, here's like the field. His, his name is Phil.
Did he, did he reply via email?
Yeah, he did reply via email like, um, cuz I sent the email to Jasmine, she, she was like, um, she replied, she was like, I'm off. Um, she was, she's on holidays, then I sent an email to Phil.
Interesting.
He sent me the, um, his email. To invite him to um GitHub and everything, so yeah, he's a ritual.
Okay, it's email, so this is an email between you, Phil and Jasmine?
Yeah, and this is the start of everything.
Okay, so like Phil was CC'd on it.
Yep, yep. There's, there's Phil and Roman, yeah, there is too.
Okay, can you send me a screenshot of that and, yeah, just right here, this window, the whole window, not, not, not the people, but the conversation?
Okay.
Yeah, and send me screenshot right now in Slack and I want a screenshot of what he said to you in GitHub. And I'm gonna write a response for you to all of them. Because I wanna escalate, this is not. The answer I wanted. Yeah, and that, yeah, that one there, where he said. I'll reopen this issue and move it.
Yeah, because, um.
Eventually investigate it, eventually investigate. Uh, he's straight up telling us. It's gonna be a long time. That's not what I wanna hear. Okay, yeah, send that to me, I'll, I'm good at wording things to get people to do what we need them to do, so. I'll get it, get the right people. Pushing this, either this guy or whoever, I'm sure they have other people on their team that can look at it. I mean, he might not even be the one directly. Just like we have more than one front-end engineer, like he might not even be the one. So to him, it's low priority. He has no idea.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, so I'm gonna make it really clear this is a widespread issue. In fact. I don't, well, if you can cite a couple more, like you showed me that other one, I don't know, it, it would be great if there was like ten more, but I always waste a lot of time with it. I'll just say there are multiple people having the same problem.
Yeah, I was, oh, I had this, you know, one, this isn't from the other one, and it's like recent, it's not all like.
Yeah.
It's only he opened the issue in September. Um, I, I, I remember like I found other one, I'm not sure if it was Android or not, but like I, I know I could find.
But he opened the issue in Sentry's GitHub repo.
Yeah, this is entry, yeah, this is all happening.
And are they, what are they saying to him?
Um, you see, this is the same guy, he was like, thanks for reporting this, uh, and he was like. Yeah, uh, we're aware of this issue, please to require, alright, he did reference this, another issue.
Yeah, leave it, leave it right there, go back. So he's saying you're not using enable view render V two yet? Is that the one, is that the experimental one that you use?
This is not the experimental one, but this is the one they recommend to use.
Okay, so we tried that, obviously.
Tried that and didn't work with it, like it didn't have.
Yeah.
And for this guy too, like from the docs, it looks like. And, and this is true, it's enabled by default, but I tried explicitly. And and this is true, it's enabled by default, but I tried explicitly enabling it. That reduced the hitch duration a bit, but not fully. So it didn't like um, did a thing. It's, yeah, and he's using, he's using Flashlist.
Uh huh, okay. So, um. When you did the sandbox, did you enable that render V two?
I did not explicitly enable it, but it is on by default.
Yeah, I know, but they're trying to say. Explicitly enable it. So like, he's just gonna fall back on like, oh, well, he didn't explicitly enable it, like, yeah.
Oh, we can, I I mean, they have the the playground, the code, just the one like changed, you can do it. If it's the case, then yeah, please tell it, that's not, we'll, we'll, we'll try it.
I'm getting a vibe from this guy like he doesn't wanna deal with this.
Um, no, I I would not say so, uh, cuz like he's he's active, he own this kind of issues, he's like, I was replying. It just.
So he, so. The guy said, okay, well, I, it's on default, but I enabled it and it still, it's didn't really help much. So then what did Phil say after that?
Um, yeah, it was like. Um, yeah, it was like, um. He's he's asking questions like how to. Um, how to to fix it? This other guy was like, we are planning to the new benchmarks. For the phones, you actually like a sport. Feels like we show a big performance over here between React Native and the line. Yeah, they saw from this comment, it was like, that's we don't expect a significant performance, so.
It's not like, it's. A really challenging, in in, tell me if you agree with this. I feel like it's not. This really um difficult, mysterious. Thing because it works on Android, which typically would be where you see a problem. So if it's working on Android, they're halfway there. Like, it must be something Flashlist iOS related that probably. Wouldn't even be that hard if they just once, you know what I mean? Like, once they get the solution, it's usually not that complicated. Would you agree?
No, because like this happens on low level. So. How they are um reconstructing the UI, it's fundamentally different. From Android and iOS, cuz each has. A graphic system, like how it works and how you should instruct it and everything. Yeah, surprisingly, looks fine for Android. But for iOS, maybe they're following the wrong um um architect there on the iOS to. To reconstruct the graphics of the UI. I I don't know what's they doing on the low level, but like. I know they are using low-level language. They're not like using something that should works for both. And.
You're here, A L W X. This is just another developer, like.
I, no, I think it works with uh with Sentry. I think so. I'm not sure. Let me see his profile. I don't know, I don't know. He lives in Austria, the same city, similar. And created the pool of ways. I'm not sure if he works. I think yes, he he opened the pool request, so, yeah, I think he works with Sentry. This this guy.
Okay, so he said, um. I would strongly suggest to update your app to the newest version of React Native and also use the new architecture. By doing that, you'll be able to use suspense. And automatic batching, which might significantly improve performance in your case. Shockwave Flashlist has also been updated to the new architecture. They state on their homepage that it delivers better performance however that comes with them. Are we using suspense?
It has nothing to do with React. Suspense, it's a React feature. It has nothing to do with React. I can go, I'm I'm sure. I can just go and do a native, like a native uh app, simple app. Which is with Swift, which is native Apple language and use the native um. Because like you see this Sentry React Native? This one, it's a wrapper of this one, where is it? Sentry Cocoa. You know, so this is. What's add, this 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 library, what what it's actually doing, the the session replay, the capturing of frames, this one. This one that it's low level. So I can just go and have a native. App for iOS with this library and I still can reproduce the issue. It has nothing to do with React or React Native.
So this guy that was writing that response, was he?
It was, it was thinking something else for his um. For this uh other guy was like says, I'm I'm having our app renders many products image and. And we do win that and that. It was like, just like giving him a general advice. If you read here, to summarize, why we think that the switch to the new system, it doesn't matter much for Sentry's decade.
Yeah, I read that.
So, yeah, um, it doesn't, um, it has nothing, like this issue has nothing to do with React or React Native. It's a low-level issue.
And then what else is the, so this guy down here, did he respond again? If you scroll downward.
Um, no, um.
Is that the end?
Yeah, this is the end. Um, so he he applied something, the other guy didn't reply, so, and just like that.
So, so they're thinking like, okay, well, I guess it's okay now, um. We go back to that one. The issue came from here. The idea here is to create a heavy, close to real app with a list of data.
So, yeah, um, like to have just a like, um, a simple project, and that's what we did for them. Yeah. So you can see, see, like, you can see, it's all two weeks ago, a month ago, so it's all.
But it's kinda like. They. They're, it didn't sound to me like there was gonna be any progress from, like, they, they're just. Letting it stall here.
Hmm, well. From here, this is like, you can see this is where they track everything, is the parent issue. It's been open since April. And this is the same thing we have in, um.
It's on April thirtieth.
Yeah, and experiment. And also they have a. What is it? Like, our production app. As you're saying. Here's what it looks like, although man, I've been on several.
Sentry or is this from a you, a developer?
Well, my developers, like from here, from another developer. He did like a sample project for them, I guess, too. Is is having like an animation here. This is without session replay enabled. And this is with session replay enabled. He's he's saying here, it's it's not clear and the video recording. Maybe like his animation is jittery too. He had, this is an animation here, this. And he's.
Scroll is the animation?
This is a different kind of animation. He used like what they call shaders animation. Like, this is different kinds of animations. But, yeah, if there's a session replay there, it's making it. Just ready for.
Okay.
This is the one, yeah, this is the.
I don't see jittery, I see it blurry.
That's, the the animation itself is blurry. Um, here is it, um. This is the another issue. To, yeah, I guess this is a lot fun, too, if you wanna reference like that. People are having this issue, you know. Um.
People having with this issue here?
Yeah, same issue we have it. When session replay is enabled, things are jittery. Well, it, for this guy is like the animation.
Yeah. So.
Is it, it only happens on the physical iPhones, not simulator. That's why it looks like the same here.
Okay, so this probably related, even though we use Flashlist, they're using an animation, but like.
Yeah.
The root, same problem?
Yeah, it is. Yes, it was like adding this experimental improve the starter. From periodical to.
Us as well, but did they lose visual? Like. Then all, could they still see session replays?
Uh, that that I don't know. He said, yeah, we'll definitely improve the performance, but doesn't fix it completely. I don't notice this other thing, but now I have it still others, starters, but less.
But, okay, so how come this guy can install the experimental and still see session replays and we can't?
Uh. Hmm, that's a good question. I'm not sure about that. Yeah.
Cuz that experimental module they built works. To smooth. Scrolling, it probably wasn't perfectly perfect, but and just like this guy saying it's not perfectly perfect, whatever, it's like way better. Like, I'd be totally happy with it. But I can't see the session replay, so there's no point.
Hmm.
And this is all back in April.
Yeah, this is the guy we met in Portland.
So is he, what aspect is he working on?
Stanzy was in a conference, he was, he's, I don't know, was was aspects he works on, but like you can.
As far as, as far as our issue, is is he working on the experimental module?
I don't know. It could be, it could be not, I don't know, but.
Well, like, what's, what did he say? Like, what what was that message right there? Like, he said. He said, I also tried running the Reproducer app with the following settings. Is this? Is this our issue? Is this in?
Yeah, this is not our issue, but like same as our issue, like performance issues. Uh, with session replay.
Okay. Did any of that? Good any of that?
We we've done, we we had this too, like, we we had it and. This doesn't do anything, this fixed it, but with black session replays.
Right. Okay. Okay, so i- i- if, if, would you say? From what you've read here, it sounds like there are. Some developers able to use the experimental module with their React Native app. And see session replay.
And see session replay that alone, because it was not mentioned anywhere here.
Yeah, I feel like we'd be hearing people say they have a black screen.
Yeah.
And we stripped it all the way down and we still had a black screen.
Um, I didn't check that.
Actually, we never checked that. Yeah, can you check that?
Yeah, I can, um.
Because. Then it's on us, right? If it's not a black screen.
Yeah, you could say that, but again. On us, like, are we using? It could be like a lobby. That's. Yeah, maybe like, there's a lobby, even like you don't see it. Right now, no, but like.
But it's on every screen.
No, this, this one, I remember this one. This one has, like, I did this, uh. Where is it? This one? Uh, where is it? I'll show you exactly the app. I will. It was like a simple app too. You see, this is the simple app that I did for. It was like a simple React Native app. It has no React, uh, no Latin or nothing. I remember.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so.
And you still could not see.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and I was still seeing blacks, uh, black, uh, screen.
I would mean, everybody would. But they would never, like, no one's even talking about that, because so. We can't avoid the black screen, even with this most stripped-down basic uh a React Native app. Yet, nobody else is even saying that.
Maybe people, they were like. Yeah, okay, we're having scroll issues or, yeah, I don't know, like, they're okay with what they have. Because definitely there's other people that they're complaining about the issue, not only us.
Hmm, okay, um. All right, let me see what I can do with the. It's really unfortunate. Because we're kinda stuck with this. All right, um. What what else do you have going on?
Um, I think I'll keep working on the, you know, some of the issues.
Okay. Okay. I'll see. All right. I wish there was something more I could point to. It's a part that really confuses me is why people are even able to say. Okay, yeah, this new experimental works better, like, nobody's, we're the only ones complaining about. The whole thing being a black screen, as far as you know.
Yeah. And, yeah, um, I don't know, but that.
Okay. Okay. And does seem like everyone else with a problem is using Flashlist or some other type of animation?
Um, the other guy was like saying, we using Flashlist.
Yeah.
So, yeah, this this one, I said, we we use the Flashlist. And have an issue.
Right.
But again, you know, um, this this other issue from this guy, it, this one, it doesn't use React.
Yeah.
This is, um. Just like, does he, it's in the century, he opened the issue in this one, a repo.
So he's not, is he coding like in Swift?
Yeah, it looks like, I mean. Let me see. He's using, yeah, he's he's using Swift back as manager. Yeah, he's he's. Yeah, he's he's.
Hmm, maybe that's why he's able to still see the session replays.
Maybe. Uh, again. Um, the React Native is just a wrapper around this.
Yeah.
But, yeah, uh, I don't know, cuz like you you're gonna see this a little bit complex and layered, like things are dependent on things and. And we definitely lack a lot of context of how those two things works together.
Yeah. Probably worth mentioning that the view dropping frames is a unit.
Uh, and yeah, you can see a prior, yeah, they did not capture the Unity view, so. Probably we're seeing the the black for this Unity view. Unity is like an engine to build games.
Yeah, the very, very first version of Circles was built on Unity. Was it's more of a game engine and the wheel was easier to create and stuff like that. It's interesting, like, can you? Can you embed Unity? In a React Native app? Is it possible?
You can, but it's not straightforward. It's, I remember like I seen a project. Where the bad unity would react. So, but like. You have to have this specific um use case to have a, it's not gonna be straightforward.
Trouble, probably.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, well, I'll, um. I'll think about how to respond to them and see if I can get more direct, uh. Support on that issue. Anything else you wanna add or?
No.
Okay, cool. Okay, cool. Thank you. All right, so, um, Ismail. Let's get your update.
Sure, um, so yeah, I spent a good amount of time yesterday also trying different things to get this, um. To get the sticker thing to work, uh, unfortunately not like, yeah, um. So, as I mentioned, the weird thing is it works on my local.
Right.
So if I'm on my physical phone and the build is running from my Mac, like the local build, it's not a test flight or app. Or a App Store build. It works as soon as I take it to, you know, publish it. It's, we see the bug that you're seeing now. Now, the weird thing is this happened in the past, or it was working in the past. Um, so, uh, again, I back traced. All the builds, the last one that was working, and then the next one that wasn't working. And. All fingers seem to be pointing to a century, because that's the only thing we change.
How ironic, we were just.
I, I know, make it even more fun. Um, so, so, I mean, if you remember, yeah, go ahead.
You took century out, I thought, and it still was a problem.
So here's the thing, I reverted it to its old, I didn't take, because to take it out, I have to comment it out everywhere. It's a hassle, so I. Put it back to the virgin I was working on. But then I'm going back to the builds that I've created and. I like, I just went through that right now, because like, why does it not work? Uh, and none of them had. Century reverted, it looks like. So, I'm looking at the tags and I think I maybe did not commit it or something by, by like. I'm looking, I, I mean, I'm creating a build as we speak right now, but I literally have like. Oh, wait a second. Okay, never mind. I think I am mistaking of how these work. So, let me see. Oh, I think I was clicking on the wrong, was I clicking on the wrong?
Have you ever, um?
Okay, okay, never mind, never mind, yes.
What if you installed the build that you, we thought was the last one that worked?
Well, I can't install it again, just because, um, it's, it's out of. Test flights, so after we create it, like, it's, it's been over three months and this flight removes it after three months.
Right. What about on Android? I guess that's even harder.
Well, well, eh, uh, I don't, yeah, well, Android can only have one build at a time.
And Android doesn't have stickers.
Um, I also don't know if Android does have stickers or not.
I think it's an iPhone thing.
Um, it.
Yeah.
Could be. I'm, I'm also not sure. Um, I'm just looking at the changes here that I am, was trying, I'm trying to find which one I did was. Try remove centuries. I just wanted to double check that I had. Oh, yeah, here it is. Okay, so I did have it. So.
There are stickers on Android, by the way.
There are. Do they work?
I haven't tried it. But I'll give it a shot.
Yeah, try sending one to chat.
It looks like, um, I did build nine, eh, two point two point nine. Eight point, um. Build number two or version number two of that build was the one where. I. I actually reverted century to the virgin where it was working on. So I did do that, yeah, okay. I did do that, so I think I can cancel this next build that's coming up. So we don't have anything new. Yeah, let me just cancel that. Okay, so I did do it and, yeah, that still didn't fix it for whatever reason. Should I run the other building? Okay, let me see the exact changes just to be sure. So when the changes. Okay, so it looks like I updated JSON, but not the yarn lock folder. Would, would that? Would that have anything to do with it? I mean, you think, or, yeah, does the lock also have to be u- updated or pushed or should it matter?
I mean.
Just before I create another build. Can we, he maybe stepped away for a second?
I mean, can you hear us?
It's fine, it's fine. I'll just, I'll just, I'll just create another build. I mean, it's gonna be running in the background as I do other things, so.
Okay.
Um. But yeah, um, yeah, that, so that's, that's still a mystery to me. Um, like, literally the only change that happened was. The one builder was working, the next one wasn't, century got bumped up one. The only change I see.
Yeah, okay, so there's a couple of te- tests, right? You could. Do a build without century at all and see if the stickers work. Right?
Um. Yeah, that one would just probably have to be. Um, it'll just require a lot of work to get century out, because it's like.
It's just a branch that you would never use, right? Like, you just discarded at the end, right?
Yeah, yeah, all I'm saying is I just have to go and like, find wherever reading century and. Take it out, like, it's not, oh, a five minute thing.
Really?
Yeah, because we're using it in other different places, I think. We just, I just have to remove it properly. Where it doesn't create any, so it's, 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 it's nothing crazy, but it's, it's quite, it will require a little bit of work, but. I, I can create a build with like that, I guess, just remove all century. Instead of downgrading it, yeah.
That'd be one test, or also try and recreate the build when it worked, just to make sure you, you have. Validation that this was the build and then the next build, it didn't work. And then you can.
Uh, okay, well, the, we did have all this, because me and, um, Jerry, actually. Jerry was the one who told me, hey, this was working in the past. I was like, really? He was like, yeah, look at this build. And then I, this was a few months ago, though, not. Like, this wasn't recent.
Right.
This was like two months ago or something like that. And then we went back and, yeah, it was working and we played with it.
The timestamps of the Slack conversation to verify which build and your thing.
Oh, I already know which build, I'm telling you, I have it. I just, I can recreate it right now. I, I can rebuild it, if that helps. And you'll see it. It'll just be a very old build, obviously.
Yeah, well, maybe, maybe it's not necessary if you're very precise, if you know precisely that it's.
Yeah, and then I, I remember back then I saw like. A bump change in, in central, I was like, yeah, that's probably not related, like, it's probably something else. I, I didn't even give it like. I was like, no, it's probably not it, like, I was like, there's no way. But then looking at it now, after I literally spent a whole. Almost two days trying to fix this thing, um. I think it might be related somehow, some way, maybe something they do, maybe it has something to do with garbage garbage collection or something like that, or. The way they track things forces iOS to do certain actions that corrupt that file or clean it before we get to read it. Something of that nature.
Right, right.
Um. But yeah, I, I tried like making an instance of that file. Keep storing it locally of the sticker, stuff like that. None of that seemed to. Really do anything. Um, useful, uh, bug still persisted and the, like, the. I would say, oh, it's a problem with the library, but no, it's not, because it's obviously working on development. Or, yeah, so it's like something between Dev and Pro and the main thing I can see that switches between Dev and Pro is probably century, so I guess that kind of maybe. And if it is century, that's the problem, then. That's one of those things where I say ninety percent of the problem is fixed once you know the source with this one. I don't know if that's the case, because. Again, it's back to century, maybe century has to fix it, or we have to know why it's happening and we don't have, we don't fully understand how century works under the hood.
Yeah.
So that would also be. But it would give us something.
Yeah, because like you know, if you removed it, it's for sure century related.
Correct. Uh, I, I, I'm almost, at this point, I'm like. Yeah, I'm starting to lean more with it as century, then again, yeah, you have, we have to remove it to see. Um, I, I, right now, I'm running a build to run it back on the six point eight build or version of century which was working. But maybe also what broke it is other configurations we added and so on. So, yeah, it's gonna remove century altogether. And have a build like that and see if, if, if that fixes it or not. But anyways, as I. Uh, the, the only problem with that is, as I mentioned, the, every bill takes an hour, so like, I have to do the change. Make sure it's working locally, and when I do the changes, a lot of the time I have to rerun it on my iOS and delete the app and rebuild it, so. Every change takes a good hour and a half, I would say, total. Even if it's small, just because of all the steps I have to take, um, to get that build out and to. Re, re delete everything on my local and rerun it, re like rebuild it. So that's just tedious part about all this. Um, and that's why it's taking so much, like, so much time, where if it was locally. I'm like, yeah, do changes one, two, three, test, one, two, three, test, but no, I have to like literally spend an hour.
Yeah.
Pushing it and testing it, uh, so that's why it's taking more time than. Think, but anyways, um, as I do that, as those run, I, I'm picking up other bugs. Um, mainly one that was, um, mentioned by Jerry yesterday in development, and that has to do with when you're adding a business, uh. So he's telling me there's five instances of that API getting called, and I looked at the session replay and it looks like the user clicked on a button five times and it was not responsive. And on the fifth time, it, it took him through. So, um, first of all, I'm gonna need to disable that button on click and. Yeah.
Which button, sorry?
Oh, this is when you add a new business, a new listing. And then when you, after you select the category, you, you, you click on the. Um, here, let me show my screen.
So favorite?
No, 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 adding a business, uh, like. Creating a new instance of the business or carry, like, adding the business to circles, like, don't, unlisted, unlisted. That's what we called it.
Yeah, got you.
Yeah, uh, so when, when, once we, um, once we. Mostly, the user was trying to add it, it, it didn't let him. Um, or it did let him, but he had to click on the button five times and it was unresponsive, so. What I need to do is, first of all, I need to see why it's taking a while to respond, which I'm working with Jerry on right now, um. The back, at least in the QA, it was giving me some kind of error, so I think Jerry's checking that out.
Yeah, it's working in product, it's, uh, maybe the QA change isn't copied. I'll have to. A seconds.
Yeah, so, um, he's investigating the backend side of things and why, and also why it took five times to begin with, I don't know. Um, and on my end right now, I, I, I'm, uh, I'm, I'm gonna work on. Disabling that button once you click it and then showing like a loader or something indicating we're processing a request instead of. These are just like, oh, why they're not moving, like, and they keep clicking it, keeps, keeps submitting another request.
Right.
Um, so I'll block them from that and show something for them that, hey, we're processing your or, your order, maybe, um. Not sure, I'm just showing, yeah, I don't know if you want a Figma design for that. Let me see, uh, so it's gonna be this screen right here. Um, let me share it real quick. And it will be the screen right here. So. Once we click on this button for the user wasn't doing anything after they had a category selected. Um, so, I don't know if we just want to add like a spinner in here or maybe something else, I'm not sure how we're gonna handle.
I think, yes, the spinner on the button, easy enough.
Okay, and then I'll disable where it's not clickable, so. We'll go with that approach and remove the airage to spinner, that's it only.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Make, make, yeah, like the whole thing, the arrow, the Chevron, uh, everything inside that button should go away.
Go on, I'm sure, so, okay, so I'll have that and I'll disable, so, but, yeah, and then the, the rest will, will be back in, so I'll be in touch with Jerry. Make to see what's going on there. Um, and. That's one thing, um, the other thing I was also working with Jerry and I got the, um. I was, I got the, we got a query for the search in chat. Now, I still do need, do need that Figma design. Um, uh, I added Jerry's query and, no, I'm, uh, I'm about to start testing it now, but, um, yeah. Okay, where would that chat go? Now, with a look, I, I would, I, I need all that data.
Okay, we'll put, put a couple of questions. Did you, first of all, did you, were you able to send a sticker on Android?
I did, and, um, let's say it works. I sent a message to you and Ismail and Danny to see what it looks like on your end.
Okay. Um.
Thank you, so you were able to send it and, uh, how did it treat the sticker, like?
I did it, there's a screen record in development right now, but I just put it up there.
It looks like it's a gift, okay. I thought, is, is that a sticker or?
Well, watch the video, it's labeled as a sticker on my keyboard.
It does, okay. I guess because on iOS, our stickers don't move, right?
They do.
They do?
I think so, yeah.
Alright, okay, I'm not too familiar, but I thought stickers.
I think they're like gifts, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, maybe, um, okay, well, it looks like they work on Android, not on iOS then. Um. So. Hmm, can we, yeah, but we can't send a gift from.
It's super sped up on the receiving end.
Uh, is it more sped up than, yeah, I think that's a glitch we had with, what's it called?
The gifts were doing that too.
The gifts were, well, this is a gift, um, the, uh, that, those are probably, we, we, we've always had. I think it has to do with fast image, right? That's, that's what we're using here.
Yeah.
I think fast image had, uh, and the fast image is not really maintained, um. I think expo image is, is a thing now, right? I mean, um. I, I don't know if you want to move over to expo image eventually. Um, I think we talked about it, I forget. I mean, did we ever talk about moving to expo images instead of fast image?
Oh, we will, can you be there?
Oh, yeah, I'm saying, have we ever talked about moving to expo image instead of fast image, since fast image is not maintained?
Um, yeah, we talked about it and. We said like, we have to wait, I thought the new architeceter, but.
Yeah, that's right.
I, um, there's another thing. When I just started working on the new architeceter, I tried to go with the expo image and. And I've seen some issues, issues that they shouldn't have been, um, fixed. And I did apply the fix and it didn't work for us. Uh, one of the issues is like the flicker, as you scroll, for example. You see where it's like a mean bill in the simulator, like, are you gonna scroll? And it's not the waterfall image, it's your image. Or another image that randomly goes to a random row and. Yeah, it was some flickering too. And I was like, okay, um, I will not go with the expo image right now.
Maybe wait for it to mature.
Yeah, but there's like, um, a fork, fast image. That I'm using the new architeceter. Like a fork, um, the community fork the, the fast image and it's maintained.
I see, hmm, okay, well, the, uh, the, the reason I bring that up is fast image has been good, except with what. Um, with, with the gifts, where it speeds up, the gift like times two almost. Now, I, I don't know if you remember that problem, so if you send a gift in chat. It, it, it's like, it plays it in like times two speed.
Hmm, I mean, um, yeah, we can give a look again once we have the new architeceter stable.
Hmm, okay, yeah, I just, because I remember we talked about it, but.
Yeah.
Now, we were telling you, it, it wasn't working first, so, okay, so, yeah.
Only the experiment, like, there is other libraries we need to migrate to, it's like, the one with the video, the expo AV.
Oh, yeah, that one we, we, yeah, that one we don't, we don't want to use. I mean, I never liked that library to begin with, but.
Yeah, and so, yeah, that, that's on the plan too, but we have to wait until we have a stable. New Washington origin.
Hmm, hmm. Okay, um, and then I, I was, I was saying something, I don't know if you've heard me, but you, do you know that stickers on iOS is not working? Like, if you try to send a sticker, it won't send. Um, now, in the past, they used to treat it as an image. Right, where it would paste it, you just select a sticker, it would paste it and then it would, it would work. Um, so, the, it hasn't been working for a few months now and. Weirdly enough, I go to the last, it was working before, so I build, um, sixty-three, it was working. Um, now, build sixty-four stopped working, and if I look at the changes between them, all we did is bumped century up. The virgin, um, it was six point. Eight, I think. And it got bumped to six point one nine. Now it's seven something. But I'm, but I'm saying, ever since we bumped up century, the stickers stopped working on iOS, which is weird. So, right now.
My iOS update or something was there at that time? That could have.
Uh, I, I'm running this, uh, well, no, no, because we, 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 we re-downloaded the app on the new iOS.
Hmm.
Like, we downloaded the old version, like sixty-three.
I see.
And it works fine still, so it's not iOS. It's literally, um, the, the, it's literally sixty-three works, sixty-four does not, end of story. Um, and no matter what iOS you're running or what device, and the only difference between that is. We bumped century up. So, at first I was like, yeah, it's probably not it, and I tried everything else. I literally spent, I was playing, uh, John, two days on this, almost. Um, trying different things, trying to fix it, trying to maybe save. Um trying different things, trying to fix it, trying to maybe save the instance. I I was looking to different. Century like, well, there was a lot of things that century did under the hood, but maybe something that they did natively. Is interfering with this. Um but the weird thing I mean is that if I'm running it on my local build. Right? It works even in right now in whatever seven point whatever century. So if if I create, like if I go to my physical phone and I and I'm running it through Metro, like a dev build. It works as soon as it's a test flight or a App Store build, a production build, it stops working.
Um um you mentioned century um in Dev. Uh when it's Metro on century is disabled.
All of century is disabled?
All of it, yeah, everything. Because like you just in there, like we don't.
Then that confirms it even more. The problem is century.
Oh, because it is working in QA.
Correct, and he I mean, because I mean setup center and he's saying and and on my local build century is fully disabled.
No wonder it works because you, yeah, you're like, well, why is it working?
You can, I mean, if you wanna like really confirm it, you can just go and enable it. It's a one line change and see if you can use in.
What line is it? I think I tried it, but let me let me just because you're more familiar with.
Yeah, let me find the line for you, um.
Because we also have session replays and we have century, but I guess one, if you disable, if you disable all of century, you should disable everything.
If you go to this, um okay, let me. If you go to this file that I just sent you and if you scroll to a line seventy-three, it might be different for you because I'm on a different branch. Seventy-three, it has an enabled. Um enabled property.
Oh, yeah, that that one, yeah, I think I've in one of my builds, I set that to to false. Um.
Okay.
Look, I I think it didn't fit. Let me here, let me just double, let me see which build that was to be sure. Because I I had a lot of them. I was trying different things.
And also like um the session replay, it's on the line thirty-seven, just to make it true. Because it's now it's a, I think yours is gonna pass it. It's gonna pass it because um. The device to be exclusive for iOS, it's not the simulator, so. Yeah, you just need to change that line that I just told you about.
Hmm, let me see here. Give me a second. I think I did create a build that line change, but let me let me just again double. Make sure one, two, three, four. Hmm. Well, none of my bills seem to reflect that, so maybe I did that. I could sworn I changed that flag in one of the builds. Almost positive. Okay, well, I guess not. Um but yeah, like right now, I'm I'm running a build reverting century back to six point eight because it was working on that one. I just want to see if that works. Um and then my next test will be disabling century altogether. So are you sure that's the only thing I need to change? Because these builds take an hour.
Um so that enabled is. It is false on the on your environment. And it's true on the build, so you don't have to do anything. I'm not sure why you need to make it. Uh I'm I'm not sure what you need to change, but like.
So wait, so technically, if I make this true. If I force it to true, then century should be enabled on my local build, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's that's what I'm saying, like change that to true to confirm.
So then now my local should break theoretically.
Yeah, because it's gonna match what's on the on the QA build or production build.
Correct. Okay, I can test that. Oh, I just need you.
The app and open it if you choose it to.
Do it.
Close the app and open it.
Yeah, well, I have to build it on my local and yeah, I'll restart. Yeah, I saw it built up. Um. Yeah, so it's it's gonna take maybe um. It's gonna take a little bit because I need to. Yeah, I just need to build up, um. But yeah, I'll I'll let you know what happens. It's probably gonna take like a good four or five minutes to build on my local. Um and I have to build on my physical device because. But I don't have stickers on my simulator. So that's why it's just gonna take a little longer. Um but yeah, I'm almost certain of century at this point. And even if we confirm a century, I I don't know how we can go about fixing this. Um do we have to like open another ticket with them or something?
It was, that's a good question. Well, wait, it worked with century on that one build. It was just an older version of century, right?
Correct.
Okay, so we could we could revert that older version works just fine. Kind of works better. So we could just revert to that one.
Um well, we'll well, we'll see what the because that right now we're on seven point something. That one's six point eight. But it's 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 one major release down and then. You have like minor releases, which is like six point eight to six point ten or six point eleven. That's minor and then you have seven. That's kind of a the quality major release.
Yeah, but we went back to six point eight for a little while just to see if it would solve any. Of the uh performance issues.
Hmm.
And it was fine.
Okay, well, right now I'm running a build for six point eight, um a test build. Um so let's see how that behaves. Um and if that didn't fix it, I'm gonna have. Well, yeah, well, right now I'm gonna have a build as we speak, running on my local to see if that breaks it. So what we're trying to do right now is actually get a get it. Get it to break on my on my local since now we enabled session replay on the local. So I we I don't know if this is enough or not. I'm I'm running it right now to see. I I think I tried this test. I mean, I I'm almost like I just did so many things that I I forgot, I forgot, but I think this is one of the tests I tried. Um which I remember that I remember changing that enable to like true or something, but then again, I'll try it right now just to be sure. Uh but yeah, this is so confusing to me in terms of why it works on local, but not that. It 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 has to do something with that development variable. And I'm seeing where it's used all over the app and it's mainly used, well. We use it for JS error handling, which is, I guess, the that that same file that we use it for um reported. Exception, yeah, has to do with century again, but it does. It is being used in other places, which I don't know if you should switch it to true in every single place. Like it could be any one of those. Maybe.
What do you mean, switch it in every place?
So the difference between dev and production. Is that variable gets, it's like a flag that gets triggered from true to false.
Yeah.
So that flag was used for century enable, which I hard coded to true to see if I can break it on my local, but it is used in other places. That's what I'm saying. So I don't know if it's a good idea maybe to switch it everywhere. And see or one by one, I guess. Well, century and it looks like we use it for app check to. Uh it's like one of the providers.
We having with the stickers. I'm not sure, I'm I'm not following this here.
Yeah.
When you say stickers, like what what do you mean?
Stickers is, you know how. iOS has like you can, if you go to your emojis, you can like add stickers there.
Hmm.
Like right now, if you go to any image and you like long press or something on on like an object, it creates a sticker for you.
Yeah.
So if you in the path, so right now, if you go to like circles chat. And you add that and you you select the sticker, you you just see an empty space.
When you do a paste on the input?
You don't paste it, you just select it on the keyboard, like in the same way you see you select an emoji.
Oh, yeah, you find it in the keyboard and you select it by just a space.
Yeah, just as an empty space. Now, in the past, you should treat it as an image and in 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 the local build, it still treats it as an image. Where uh you send it as an image. If that makes sense.
And what's the issue if it's there and it needs to be a sticker?
If what?
You said it should not be an image, but it should be.
No, 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 it should it should the image is fine. That's the only way we can handle it because stickers are local to like Apple. And you 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 but the way other apps do it is you send it as an image.
Let me give you a little background. So I mean, we had stickers working fine in chat like three months ago. And they stopped working all of a sudden. And it sounds like we've determined it was. Most likely this uh set century upgrade. And so now, when someone tries to send. The sticker on an iPhone, it doesn't work, but it does work on Android. Todd sent a screen record into Slack development channel just a little bit ago, a few minutes ago, and you can see what a sticker looks like on Android. But um but also. On a side note to this. The library we're using, Fast Image, I guess, is um making the sticker play really fast. Like the the screen record you're seeing looks normal. But he sent that uh sticker to me. And so when I receive it and and it plays automatically, it's like super fast. And that's where the discussion came in about Expo. But um yeah, so like. I guess you're asking Ismail if we should. How best to revert?
I was like trying to understand like to understand where, how is this related to century?
Oh, the way it's related to century is, well, two things. Built sixty-three was working. This is a very old build sixty-three. Built sixty-four stopped working. The only difference is we uh essentially was upgraded from six point eight to six point like nineteen or something.
Hmm.
So that was the only change. And that broke it. Now, clue number two is that. On my local build, where dev is true and century is disabled, it works. As soon as you push the buildup to test flight, it stops working.
Okay, um yeah, so let's start by not having century. I mean, yeah, not not on your on because it's disabled on the on your environment. Let's enable it in your environment and see if it's gonna work or not.
Yeah, that's what I'm doing right now. And I just I just enabled it and the build just finished. So right now it's running. Um I'm about to send a sticker. I have not done that yet. Um so let's go. It's a little slow. Hmm, so even though I enable century, it's still working on my local.
So, yeah, now in terms of century, it's enabled for you. So it's not, I don't think it's related to century if I'm gonna sus- suspect something. I'm gonna suspect the. The input, the input, the, I don't know, it was working before.
Well. I would agree, and I I did a lot of changes to the inputs, to the pace, to all that. I didn't seem to get anywhere, but I mean, why would it work on the local and not work on the? You know what I mean? So it's it's too much of a coincidence that works on local, it doesn't work on test flight. And the last builder was working on on both. The only difference between sixty-three and sixty-four is century. Got updated. Um. Now, I know, like, I I I didn't even consider century as a problem when I first saw this. Yeah, it's probably not it. And I just. Started doing other changes, but I keep running into dead ends. Uh which, I mean, if there is always a chance that maybe it's not a century, but it's just why is. Why is it not working?
Yeah, because I'm trying to think of how century could be interfered with, happy and paste in a sticker. You know?
Correct, but. Century does. Also. Have native changes and sticker is native to iOS, so maybe something with garbage collection or. Or forces it to review or something like that, like.
Yeah, I don't know, but yeah.
Like maybe some code they added. Tweak the behavior because like they probably want to track file selection and uploads and maybe that's. Again, this is just a theory, where that maybe they trigger garbage collection too soon where we lose a sticker before it gets uploaded. Or the path changes or I don't know.
If you're sure that is century.
Well, I'm not sure. That's the thing. Like I I I don't have solid proof yet. I do not have solid proof, so.
Right now, they will be like, oh, we can now produce it. We need a. How to produce the ball to know it's a century just goes in it, so. Yeah.
We just go back to version six point eight. And if everything works fine, we just stick with that for a little while. Do any reason not to do that, I mean?
Or we just like, since you say in like the only change was century version, let's just make it as before.
That's what I've said.
Oh, yeah. We just revert the century version to how it was before and test again.
Yeah, and that's what you're testing now, right? Um Ismail?
Well, I have a build, it should be up any second now, that would have the old century. But um. But I'm not, yeah, let let's see, let's see what that does. So this will be, everything will be the same. It'll just have six point eight century, the one where it was still working. Um. So, yeah, theoretically, that should work. Um weirdly enough. I was not able, okay, so I want my local to break. For two reasons. One reason, number one is to basically make sure that that's the problem. And reason number two, if I can break it on my local and I can fix it on my local, I don't have to keep doing these one hour builds.
Okay, how do you want to test that? Because you want it, well, you know, oh, yeah, you're just gonna enable the flag from false.
Yeah, which I did right now, but it looks like it's still working on my iOS. But I think I had, I would, I I think I ran an MPM assault with the old century. Because I was testing other stuff, so I just did another build right now with the new ones to make sure. We are. Running the new century, not the old one. Um. But yeah, this this I was supposed to be up by now. It's just taking a while to finish.
Okay, but you you can test it uh without doing a build, right? Because you're gonna test it on your local.
Um well, but I have to build it on my physical device because my simulator doesn't have stickers, so I'm creating a local build. On my physical device, if that makes sense, not a test flight build. It it should be up in like two minutes. Um and then the and then the. The one that also should be up, we should also have a test flight build that should be up any minute now. That basically reverses to sixty-eight or six point eight century, which was working before for us. So let's see if that fixes it.
Okay, and then while you're waiting for the building to be done, you were having a discussion about Expo versus Fast Image, right? Did you guys?
Yeah, I mean, I was saying it was it had still had problems. It was lickery and it had other books, so we're waiting for Expo Image to mature more. Lickery and it had other bugs, so we're waiting for Expo image to mature more before we make the switch. Because it is fairly new, if I'm not wrong.
Okay, so we won't be rushing into the Expo version of it.
Not yet, no. And we do need any architecture anyway, so.
The explanation is not that new, it's just like us, we have to have a stable ground for it. Before doing the migration, Jay, because it's 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 a lot of things that are gonna change and. We need like a a working ground before doing this.
I mean, we don't have to change it everywhere. We mainly wanna change it in chats because of that gifts. Uh.
I mean.
Or like we can do it incrementally. You don't have to do the whole thing in one go.
Yeah, um that's a good thing, but. We'll be having two image libraries in the project.
Yes, I mean.
Stand up for long.
Um yeah, so you you were looking into something, right? You were gonna test something.
Yeah, I was just curious.
And everything, okay?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, yeah, check. Make sure you check everything over everything. I mean, I had to change a couple of things from that PR you just did it uh. Well, it was earlier in stand-up. The one with the um. The variables, it um. It caused a couple of queries to break. I fixed a couple of them, but I I I would go and retest all of them again if you got if you haven't.
Okay, I'm checking.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, thanks on it. We'll see you tomorrow.
I mean, I think I once brought this up, but can't we do anything to speed up these iOS builds, like by a faster server?
I think, I'm not sure about this, but the um. What is it? It's by Expo. They're like, we can do the builds on their server. And I I think you don't mention it's faster there. I'm not sure how it's it's. Luckily, they do win projects, like sample projects. We hate, just takes five minutes, but like it depends on what you're using on the project.
No, no, correct, but if I'm not mistaken, you can, first of all, you can have it requested to run on a Mac. And then you can choose that Mac that creates the build for iOS, like what chips it has, like you can upgrade to a faster chip.
Are you talking about Git GitHub?
Uh, so this is through, I know Expo has the service if you do it through um their service, which is eh EAS, but. I I don't know if GitHub also has it cuz.
No, like um to choose what server to use for GitHub, it has nothing to do with. Are you using X four E S? It's like on the GitHub action.
No, no, I'm no, I'm what I'm saying is, so you know how you can create the build either. On GitHub server, the like like we're doing right now, or you can create it on EAS servers.
Mm hmm.
I know on the E S servers, uh you can choose. What machine you wanna run your.
And that's GitHub too, and we're using the bill, they're calling it large runners. So I think. But I'm not sure if there is like a bigger one that we can go to. I'm not sure.
I mean, I I I I think I I I saw this a while back. I have looked into it recently, but I I do remember they started using like. Uh the new chips from Apple and so on, and it 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 increased this the the build speed by quite a bit.
Yeah, um I mean, yeah, you can you can search for that if it's possible, then we can do it.
Yeah, I mean, they might charge like uh uh right now, they do charges for the current.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the charge might be slightly more. I don't think it's gonna be insanely more, but it will save us a lot of time with these bills cuz. They're pretty darn slow. I mean, Android is not bad, but iOS is the one that's. It's really slow. Okay, so I created the build on my local. With Sentry enabled. And it's still working, so it did not break, which we wanted to break. Um, so let me try like other. So I'm gonna go wherever I see that dev, I mean, I'm gonna enable it to true. Just to have a truly. Identical environment, I guess. Because it could be anything at this one. I'm not even sure what it is. Have this to true, save. And this to true. Oh, wait, we have to have it. Hmm yeah, wait, never mind, sorry. Okay, so. We have wherever is we we have to have the opposite of that that one if it's we have to hard. Core to true, and then this one we have to do false, we have to do the opposite for the one that had that. Because that's the they'll be false in test flight. Okay, let's not get myself confused there. Okay, so this one should be false. This one should also be false. Okay, this one should be false. Okay, so now I should have an exact. Replica of. This variable dev. And it shouldn't exactly match. Um, that's flight. So let's go ahead and restart Metro. Clear the account as well as to be safe.
Hmm.
And I don't need to restart the app. I just have to, or I need to restart the app and not rebuild it, so. Doing that right now. Okay. Yeah, still working and development, even after enabling everything.
Hmm.
So stickers are working?
Yeah, we want them. To be not working. Because we technically.
You're.
Enabled Sentry.
You're not in the old version of Sentry?
No, I'm on the new version and I have it set to true, so this should break the my local build, but it's not. To make everything even more confusing.
Ah, right. Okay.
Because if I can break it on my local, then I can fix it on my local.
Yeah, not to mention it wa- was gonna validate the speculation about.
Yeah.
Treat that uh version.
I mean, I I do have a build go, I think, yeah, I I do have a a build that should be up soon. I'll give it probably give it five minutes. That's gonna be our code with the old Sentry six point eight. Um, and if that doesn't work, then I'm really gonna be confused.
Yeah.
Um.
Okay.
But yes, so mind boggling to me, why does it work on my local and not in dev? And and this is not like a. Like, this is not a a lot. It's not a, how do I put this? It's like the same build and the only difference between local and dev is like JavaScript configuration, not native. I would think. So yeah, why does it always work on my local environment? And like I said, I I tried to do many tweaks on the chat input field itself. But if I don't think that's the case, I mean, because if if chat input wasn't handling it properly, then it won't work on my local.
Again, to follow to follow and like understand this, it works on production?
No, okay, so.
Works only on local.
So with stickers. Stick like like I have a local built, a local built means I load it from Metro.
Mm hmm.
Anything that's locally built stickers work on, fine. Right?
Hmm.
So right now, I'm running it on my physical phone. But the build I created from X code. It's loading from my computer. It's not a test flight build. It's a dev build.
Mm hmm.
It works, stickers work. Now, as soon as I download the app from Test Flight or Production App Store, it stops working.
Hmm.
And I did what you just told me where I switched all the flags to true. Um, so like I enabled Sentry. And wherever that the flag was also there, I also switched it to mimic as if we're in production. And stable stickers still work. Which is confusing to me.
I'm not sure, but it seems like we have to enable something on the iOS side. There's something it's called iMessage extension. I'm not sure if that's needed for production to be working, but from from what I found from here, from this this article. I'll send it to you. It's like, if you wanna add send stickers. You need to enable this iMessage extension.
So here's the thing, I mean, this was working before that.
Are we sure? Are you you sure about that?
Build sixty-three, if I mean, I can probably recreate it, but yes, me and Jerry went back to older builds. And we saw it working. Jerry's the one who pointed it out. It was okay, this was working before, why is it not working now? And he was correct. And I go to build sixty-three and it is working. I go to build sixty-four, it's not working. And I I look at the difference between sixty-three and sixty-four. And the only difference was we bumped Sentry up.
Okay, so here's it, yeah. Uh, did we just that, like uh downgrade Sentry?
So that's the, so I did create one build where I downgraded Sentry. Um, it didn't work. I'm creating another one right now, but I guess the yarn lock wasn't updated in that build. I don't know if that has any effect whatsoever.
It has an effect. It needs to be updated too, like.
Okay, so the one I'm creating right now has both, because like the other one had package JSON updated, but the I I didn't. Run yarn assault, so the yarn lock didn't upgrade, so I was like, okay, maybe it's that. So right now, right now, the build I'm running is deploying as we speak, has both. Yarn install or package JSON and yarn lock.
Most importantly, you down downgrade the Sentry to. Right?
Yeah, the only difference in this build is that I downgraded Sentry.
Okay, yeah, so.
So let me repeat myself, maybe.
Well, I I get it, I get it. You did downgrade Sentry and the changes. That affects the downgrade, it's in the package and the on log file.
Okay, so yeah. So the the my my first one where I downgrade where I downgrade essentially, I the the yarn lock that. Had not updated. This one, the yarn lock is updated.
Yeah, I'm following, I'm following.
Yeah, so.
We'll have to wait and test again.
Yeah, so this one should be up literally any second now. It's just taking its sweet time, but um it's deploying to the App Store. Uh that's the step that's on in. I'm gonna get help action. So we'll see, but weirdly enough, I still can't break it on my local, no matter how how hard I try. Because you'd think it would break on my local at this point, but it's not. Okay, so um well, my job is not completed, but uh still hasn't pushed it to test flight. Sometimes it can take a minute or two, I guess.
Okay, well, we were talking about something else other than the stickers. What what was the other thing?
Um, oh, for me, I wanted the the what's it called, the. Um, search, the sigma for the search um on. And 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 lobby, because I I got the backend, but now I I don't know how it's gonna look on the front end side. Where it's gonna go, how it's gonna behave, all that good stuff.
Right. Right, right. Okay. Yeah, I was thrown off when I learned it was. Changed. In the latest iOS operating system, that where they put a search bar.
Oh, yeah, now they just have that the bottom. Did you get to see that, how that looks?
I didn't. Did you send it to me?
I did not send it to you.
Yeah, I get it. If you have.
Huh?
Yeah, could you send me a screenshot? I want to see.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Okay, so yeah, I'll. Work on getting a design. What else was there?
Hmm, and there was a button I was working on as well. Um, where when you basically. Um, there's the build, the the one where um pretty submitted unlisted business. Uh, Jerry's just looking at the back and I'm I'm doing some tweaks on the front end.
Okay.
So on, so there's that. Yeah, that that that's fixed. It was just on QA. Good. Yeah, I just need to do some front end improvements and um that's all I had. Uh. Okay, so that build is up. Let's see if stickers work.
Okay.
Hmm, no, they don't.
They don't, but you expected them to work. Because it's. Is it Sentry? You had removed Sentry?
I put it back to the version I was working on before.
The version that was working, okay. We just haven't tried removing Sentry.
Um, I haven't tried removing it altogether just yet.
Because if you remove it and they still don't work, then it wasn't Sentry.
What's that?
If you remove Sentry and the stickers still. If you remove Sentry, and the stickers still don't work, that means Sentry was not the problem.
Um. Yeah. But it would. Well, I guess, yeah, yeah, if we remove it altogether, then I guess it can't be the problem.
Right, and it's starting to be questionable. If that was the change, because.
Well, I mean, GitHub doesn't lie, it was telling you that, you know?
Um, can you tell me like the version number where it was working and the version number where it's not working?
Yeah, sixty three. And sixty four, so. Um. Where's, uh, let me just send you that image. So, uh, John, I just sent you the image for the, for the iMessage. You, you can see how that new glass thing. If you can see it at the bottom, see how it's like. The search is see-through almost.
Interesting. Huh, okay.
But yeah. That's how they do it, um, and yeah.
On it, does it like, um, like it's like full opacity?
Uh, if you click on it, the keyboard pops up, and then you, yeah, it's like a whole different experience, so like. It's, it's a full-on search which does everything, like it's a one and all where searches messages, it searches links, it searches media, searches. Groups, it searches, like it does everything. Um, and there's like multiple levels to it, so like, for example, it starts off with conversations. And then it has a CL button, and then after that, it, it starts listing contacts, then after that starts listing messages. After that starts listing links, after that starts listing photos, after that documents and so on.
Interesting, okay.
Okay, so it, it's like the same, you, I just typed in one letter and gave me like. Four different, like one, two, three, four different categories, or five different categories, um. Each one with its own components, its own search. Um, again, the first one is labeled as conversations, the second one is messages, then you have links, then photos, then documents. And each one has a expandable CO button on top of it.
Okay.
So it's kinda crazy.
Yeah, okay, well, I'll investigate.
Okay. And yeah, I mean, I mean, so for. For, if you wanna do a code comparison, I actually created a PR yesterday, I mean, um, between sixty three and sixty five. That's just for me to do comparison, it's, it's, you know, it's not actual PR. Um, but sixty four, uh, it's not a, uh, there, like, there's no. There's no branch called sixty four, but if you go back to like actions and you go to sixty three. Um, you'll see that, um. Let me hear sixty three, uh, so sixty three, yeah, the, the one after sixty three, between sixty three and sixty five, which is sixty four. Which is where it broke, it's the one where you have, you have it called, does that mean fix bump up Sentry?
Mm-hmm.
So that's the branch where it broke.
Okay, sixty four where it broke, sixty three where it was working.
Correct.
Okay.
Um, yeah, um, can we, can we press sixty three to testify, or do you have to create a new build, can you have to create a new build?
Uh, you have to create a new build with a different, um, version. But it's already there.
It, it's not a test flight because it, it expired.
Hmm, yeah.
Cause after three months it expires, and it's, it's been a while, it's about three months.
GitHub is down for me, I don't know what's going on. GitHub is down for me.
Oh, hold on.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah, if you go to testify, you can't find sixty three.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, you can do another, like, find that comment from, from the action, the build action for sixty three. And use it to base your build, and just use.
I mean, I can just re, rerun sixty three with.
No, uh, uh, this flight will reject it, because it's. The same version, you have to change.
No, 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 I, I can just, I mean, what I can do is, I can just create a new build, and. And when, when it tells me what branch, I can just select sixty three branch and just change the version number.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, here, let me do that, sixty three, uh, have it point to QA. And. Hmm, two point two point ninety nine. So that we know what it is.
No, nine, uh, ninety nine is already there.
Oh, it was already, oh, you already pushed ninety nine?
Use your, just use yours and increment the bill number, so you can keep track. Instead of.
Okay, um, sorry, just with, with. Well, are you sure now, is there, I don't see.
Yeah, I did, um. No, yeah, that's, I, no, sorry, that was intro, I guess.
Android, yeah, cause like I can't do another ninety eight, if you have a ninety nine.
No, do a ninety, keep the ninety eight, and do a bill number of two.
Well, I already have ninety eight, six. Cause I was.
The seven, because he just tested now.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I'll do seven, that's fine, okay, I just, okay. So, I'll, then I'll, um, I set that build up, it should be, uh, it should be up soon, oh, an hour. Um, and yeah, we, we'll revisit this after we, we see if that's working or not. Um, I'll slack you, I mean, as soon as it's up, and if you wanna help me, cause I, I, I spent a good. Almost, almost two days on this, I, I haven't gotten really anywhere other than Sentry.
Okay, so you'll know, you're gonna test one more time in an hour when you get the build.
Well, um, I, I just uploaded sixty three again, just to. Again, confirm to myself and everyone that, hey, yeah, this was working in the past.
Mm-hmm, and? Oh, that's building, we're waiting?
Yeah, that's, yeah, it's gonna take an hour.
Okay.
That's where, that's the main thing I hate about this bug is that, this, all these builds.
Yeah.
If I have seven builds, that's seven hours.
Right, can you do two simultaneously, can you do another one where you take Sentry out?
I won't let you.
Okay, but it'll take you time to remove Sentry anyway. I think that's a worthwhile one, so you.
Oh yeah, I'll, 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 I'll do that, yeah. Uh, I guess right now, I, I need the sigma, and uh, so I'll. Until I get that sigma, I'll, I'll fix the two other bugs, which is, I'll remove Sentry and create another build, and I'll, and I'll fix that unlisted. Thing on the front end, uh, until, and hopefully I get the thing on today, and I can. Finish, uh, start working on the, uh, lobby search for chat.
Okay, I think that's a good plan. Then.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll, I'll keep you in the loop, I mean, about the whole sticker thing. As I go, since you have experience with Sentry, maybe you can see something I don't.
Okay, well, um, sounds like we're. Got a good spot for now. Then, um. Let me know how it goes.
Yeah, I'll keep you updated on what I find.
Okay. All right, sounds good, then, uh. Everything's making progress, let me know if you need anything, and talk to you guys later.
Sounds good.
All right. See you guys.